It is 25. Don't wish September away.
Right. Good evening, welcome to the Town Council Workshop of September 25th, 2023. Going to begin with roll call. Councillor Gass.
President.
Councillor Mead.
President.
Councillor Hite.
Here.
I'm Councillor Chapel and to my right is interim Town Manager Josh Tiffany. We are waiting on Councillor Maguire's attendance. Hopefully he can join us either remotely or in person soon. So this evening, we're going to spend the bulk of our time reviewing proposed zoning ordinance and village standard amendment, village design standards amendments related to complying with what is now state chaptered law 672, which was formerly known as LD 2003. During the last legislative session, it was an act to implement the recommendations of the Commission to increase housing opportunities in Maine by studying zoning and land use restrictions. So we've already implemented part of the law related to accessory dwelling units over late spring of this year, and now we're working on two more elements of the law to comply before the January 1st deadline for towns that are governed by town councils. Doug, would you mind just giving us, you provided a very in-depth memo, but would you mind just giving us for the public's benefit an overview of what you've provided?
Be happy to. Doug Webster, Planning Director. So I still call this LDO3. I understand it has a different number. The, there are four parts to the new law. The first part is actually some responsibility on behalf of the state to establish statewide housing production goals. And that's a state responsibility. And then there are three, basically three different elements of municipal responsibility. One is the accessory dwelling unit, which the council adopted in time for the then-in-effect implementation, and it replaced the accessory, accessory apartment. So accessory apartment was replaced by the accessory dwelling unit. So that's one of the three municipal pieces. The other two municipal pieces that municipalities throughout Maine are required to adopt, and the legislature has removed home rule authority. Home rule, for the benefit of those that aren't familiar with that term, means that the legislate, unless the legislature specifically disallows home rule, municipalities have the authority to adopt rules that are more stringent, more restrictive than minimum state statutes. For the purposes of, again, I call it LDO3. LDO3, the state legislature has specifically disallowed municipalities from being more restrictive. They've said they are very clear within the statute as to what the town can and cannot do. So the second, so there's the, from a municipal perspective, there's the accessory dwelling unit, there's increased density, and there's affordability. Those are the three municipal pieces. The council kindly provided input at a June workshop for the elements that the, that Gray has the ability to adjust. Most of the elements, again, of the statutory language do not afford the ability for Gray to deviate, just as with any other town. Excuse me. So the proposed amendments, and I've got, we did finally get legal earlier today. I'm happy to step through. There's relatively minor changes. There's nothing substantive, which was reassuring. It was a relatively, thanks to Kristin. This was a relatively heavy lift to try to interface Gray's current ordinances with the statutory requirements, and we took quite a bit of time to bring it all together. So, let's see, I was going someplace with that. So we have the worst, from a timeline, so the, as you pointed out, the ADUs were adopted in time for July 1, and the legislature delayed the required adoption for the other elements until January 1st of 2024. The anticipated timeline is obviously the workshop tonight. The first reading and the advertising has been structured this way. Of course, the first read at the council's meeting, regular meeting next, this week from tomorrow, October 3rd. The planning board hearing is slated for October 16th. I know that's a Monday. The planning board meeting was moved due to some challenges getting some members. And the following night, on October 17th, is the slated second read adoption, and then there's the 30-day wait. So that's the timeline that we have in place. So from a municipal perspective, there was the ADUs, and then there, the changes that we're about to go into the nitty-gritty detail about address the affordability and the increased density requirement in the statute. The final phase will be adjusting the requisite portions of the subdivision ordinance, in particular, the residential open space subdivision provision, I think it's 401-1313. And that is on the radar for the ordinance committee this Thursday. To try to keep that moving in line with the priority that the council assigned to that at their recent retreat.
Is, what time is that meeting?
4:30.
Well, 4:30. It's virtual. Virtual.
Virtual, yeah.
Yep. But we're going, this'll be just the beginning of trying to figure out what needs to be changed if the residential open space subdivision provision embedded within the subdivision ordinance can work for accessory dwelling units. Is there an ample building envelope, as an example, that that section of the subdivision ordinance was, one of the foundations was it was going to be single-family only. It still reads that way. Can it realistically support, as an example, an ADU? And so that's going to be, we need to get our arms around that. So Thursday is anticipated to be kind of the beginning of where do the problem children lie, and what do we need to do to try to correct that? If that helps. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I just, I think it's great that they're going to take a crack at it. We're still working on it in open space. I'm just trying to go through the questions, but we've been disrupted by other business. So I'm hoping that this upcoming meeting in October will really have time to go through it. So yes, thank you.
Sure. So that, any adjustments to the subdivision ordinance are considered to be kind of the third phase, if you will, of implementing this LDO3. First phase was ADU. We're here tonight to talk about the second phase, density and affordability, and then the third phase is anticipated to be whatever changes are necessary to the subdivision ordinance. So I'm happy to run through the, my page is mixed up here. Happy to run through the more substantive, none of the changes are substantive, but some of the more, some of the highlights of the legal input, if that's helpful.
Yeah.
Or do you want to go from the, from the beginning down to the end? Or you want me to go through the legal input first?
Why don't you go through the substantive changes from beginning to the top, and then if, maybe you could just incorporate any legal input as you're going? Would that, would that work?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Yep. So the council packet, page 2, is basically an introduction. And then we have the proposed amendments. I'm on council packet, page 3. The amendments to LDO3 that became effective in June of 2023 included some amendments to the definition of affordability, as you may or may not be aware. And so those need to be made here in the definitions. I'm in the middle of packet, page 3. And they, you'll see that those are echoed later. When we talked about the performance standards, if you will, for affordability, it seemed prudent to echo them. So there's some slight changes to bring this definition in line with the statutory amendments that became, that were adopted this past June.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a quick question. And be under affordable housing, the last sentence, it refers to household's monthly income on housing costs. Should that read gross monthly income, or is that not the way the statute read?
This comes, and if you look at the, in the handout, it's one reason I included it in case there were.
Okay, yep. I see, no, it's monthly income there, okay. I mean, usually in affordable housing stuff, it's calculated on gross monthly income, but if that's not the way the statute's written, please.
I wonder, I wonder what standard we, I mean, is it net? Is it gross? What standard should we use? It's not very clear.
Yeah, it's not clear. I mean, it's always gross, but in, like, we've talked about the Department of Housing and Urban Development, for example. It's almost always, it's always gross, as far as I know. But, so yeah, it's a, there's some lack of clarity there, but I don't want to get hung up there.
The changes that the attorney made reference as defined by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on the United States Housing Act of 1937, Public Law 75-41250. It's a CFR, I would assume. It does not specify gross in what, in the language of the attorney.
Can you, what's CFR? I'm sorry, I don't.
Code of Federal Reg, just like, yep, Code of Federal Regulations. So apparently, the legislature with the June 23 amendments, per the town's attorney, changed to this incorporated a reference to the applicable federal, federal law.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. So let's see, that's, so the, there's some other changes to definitions as we move forward. I don't want to jump ahead, and in fact, we reordered the packet that's on display out front, but if you jump ahead to, and I'd like to keep it in line, but this is, this I think will help the council understand. If you jump ahead to council packet, page 17, you will note that one of the changes that we've proposed for the purposes of implementing this new statute is to make a distinction between multifamily development and a multifamily dwelling. And because that's a, so there's a slight change to the uses table because of that. And as a result of that, because it's in the uses table, of course, there needs to be a corresponding definition. Because of the density requirements that are required in LDO3, you have, we felt it to be the most efficient way to go about it to, because there, if you have a vacant parcel, as an example, you have to allow up to, if it's in a growth area, subject to some other provisions, you have to allow up to four dwelling units. And so we bifurcated, if you will, multifamily dwelling from multifamily development.
And can I just ask, because again, and being an affordable housing nerd a little bit, I, typically, single-family units are defined as two to four units. Again, that's sort of under HUD speak, so it may not be included in the statute.
Yeah, and most zoning ordinances I've worked with, including Gray's, don't do that. And one of the reasons is to try to keep the distinction between the building codes that are the, they call the IRC, International Residential Code, which applies to one and two family, and then the IBC, National Building Code, which is anything more than two family.
Okay.
So we didn't, I understand that HUD may treat it differently, but we were trying to, as much as possible, keep the zoning as consistent as possible with the applicable building codes. When I started, the building codes were this thick, and now they're this thick.
No, that makes sense. I mean, HUD is certainly the lesser partner in this endeavor, so yeah, it makes sense.
So that's the, so we've got multifamily dwelling and multifamily development. The, one of the more substantive, short-term recommendations in this language is to have, it's the very last sentence, and they kind of got melded together there from a formatting perspective. Apologize for that. If you look at the last sentence of designated growth area, it says specifically that it's the current, actually, the attorney didn't like current, they struck that out, the village center and village center proper. Until the town can get its arms better around the growth area that's in the comp plan, it seemed to make sense to, for the purposes of making sure that we comply with the implementation deadline of January 1st, it made sense to utilize the existing zoning. And obviously, this would be, will be revisited as an integral part of the new zoning. At one point, we were talking about, and it's still, I think, a valid concept, a growth area overlay, but given the questions around the water district and wellhead 2, I think it's going to take a little bit of time to massage those boundaries, so.
We're not required to, I think you've covered this in a meeting that wasn't, maybe it was at our retreat where we didn't have, we didn't have video recordings, but we're not required to honor the growth area in the comprehensive plan as of yet, right? As, since it hasn't been, our zoning hasn't been updated to reflect those, the land use map that we outlined in the comp plan. Is that correct?
Yep. The statute and the guidelines, or the rulemaking, I should say, associated with LDO3, they say that it needs to, you need to define a growth area, but it doesn't say that, doesn't say specifically that it needs to be the most currently adopted comp plan. And for that reason, again, given the, it's going to take a little bit of time, I think, to kind of figure out how to most practically interface the comp plan and the questions that have understandably been raised by the water district, as well as the new zoning for the village core. Obviously, the comp plan is the guiding, the guiding document, but the town has the option of moving those areas a little bit. It's a blueprint, as the expression goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Ian.
I just have another definition question, and that is around short-term rental units. It's defined as living quarters offered for rental through a transient rental platform. So I'm just curious if this, so a property owner who, you know, rents their property through word of mouth, it would not be affected by this?
This, that's not, because it's not underlined. This is not a change.
Okay.
This is. Yeah, the underlined, did that not make it? We've had a couple different versions of this.
In my packet, also, you referred to designated growth area earlier, and I don't have anything underlined under that definition in my packet. Is that correct?
Yeah, these. Because there have been so many different versions, the, that actually, as I stand corrected, that actually is a new definition. And that, that definition has been edited by the attorney to read, living quarters offered for rental through transient rental platform, your same question, as defined by 36 MRSA Section 175220-C. So that probably comes right out of the, it's the statute, LDO3. Looking in the handout that I gave you guys to see definition. I can check on that. Again, the, the, there were some very minor modifications to that.
From the attorney?
From the attorney.
Yeah.
And I just read the, her recommended final version, which, very similar to the affordable housing, referenced the applicable state statute.
Okay.
36 MRSA Section 175220-C.
Well, I mean, my point remains that it's a loophole, and I, we can't be stricter, though, than the state standard, right? So.
Nope. We can't.
All right. I'll shut up about it.
Yeah, that's, but I will check on the source of that. So that's the definition. Lots, this is on council, keep my council packet pages here. Council packet, page 5? I'm sorry, is there a question?
Lots for the business development zone, is that what you're talking about, or backlots? There's a bunch of lots appears in a bunch of different places.
Yeah. Lots of multiple street frontages.
These residential open space, individual lots. Well, you're looking for that. If I can just, sorry, I'm late, folks. This document that was here is related to what we got how?
It's, it's the statute, just the copy of the statute that the state has.
Did all of our stuff is originally?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. And then we're just going, Doug's highlighting the major changes in this, and then also noting input we've gotten from the attorney as he's going along. Doug, where, was there a specific item under lots that had a distinct change, or was, did you want to highlight the entire section that starts on packet page 4?
Just the, on packet, page 5, at the very top, we added the uses that are exempt from current 40262D, which is one principal structure per lot, multi, self-storage, planned unit development, and multifamily development. So again, stemming back to the distinction that we're proposing between multifamily dwelling and multifamily development.
So I guess I just have another question. By, by looking at this attachment, is it, am I correct in saying that we can't tell what's new and what's proposed? Because I don't, like, on page 5, I don't see any underlining.
Yeah, no, the handout you sent, or the one that was posted on the website, I think, doesn't include any changes.
There are some times, and I've noticed when you're working, especially with the most recent file format of Word, that when you make a PDF out of it, you lose the underlines and strike-throughs. I've run, followed that myself a couple of times. I don't know if that's what happened here, but.
Okay, so I'm correcting that statement that we can't tell what's new and what's proposed in this?
No, this looks all.
Not in that version, unfortunately. Yeah, but there've been, there've been at least six or seven versions that have been changed.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think if you cover what, what the most prominent changes are, the way, as we're proceeding here, that I think that's fine.
Sure. Happy, happy to do that.
So we left off on only one principal building per lot. Some changes there.
Yes, yep, and listing out multifamily development as a specific exemption from the requirement for one principal structure per lot. So let's see, I'll step you through, trying to. It's frustrating that the underline didn't come through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you kind of been bouncing around the document, or have you started at the front and just gone through?
We're just starting.
Oh, we started at the front. Yeah, I thought you were asking.
Yeah, no, why don't we just, why don't you just continue that?
Yeah, keep going.
Doug, it'd be easiest, I think, for us. So we're on packet page 5.
Yes, yep. And I'm trying, doing my level best to parallel the two, because I have a, the attorney version here that has the underlined.
Can we make quick copies of the attorney version? Is that worth doing? Would that be quicker?
That might be less stressful.
We can.
Yeah, that's, that would be helpful. I didn't realize you were working off two documents over there.
Sure. Yep, I can, I can take care of it. I'm trying. Yep, we're going to go off kind of, yep. Color would be ideal. I don't know if that's possible. Okay. Thank you.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
So, so many different versions, I just get that, you don't really see the underlines after a while, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, and we've made some changes, which we haven't had a chance to catch up with you or anybody else, about how we want to get documents in the future, so I think that will help alleviate some of this problem.
Okay.
While we're waiting, one of the things we talked about was that, so we have version one, where we have underlines and strike-throughs. So when we go review that version, if we've okayed the underlines and strike-throughs, in the next version, they're all just black background. And the only changes that we'll see in version 2 will be new strike, struck through or underlined things. And we want the date for each time the document is revisioned in the footnotes. And the dates will just collect at the bottom, so that we'll always be able to see the progression of the revisions, find those documents if we need them, and keep track with the most current one. Small changes, I don't think, it'll take us all of a while to get used to, but I don't think they'll be too onerous.
Okay.
Do you want to wait till Josh is back to continue, since you're missing part of your, or do you?
We could jump, there's a couple, on council packet, page 7, these are minor, under, under the second full sentence, under A, 8.3 Village Center Design, Village Center District Standards. She replaced, at the end of the second sentence, dwelling unit density with minimum area per dwelling unit in multiple locations, and under A1 as well, and under A2.
Why is that, why is that a necessary differentiator? I guess I'm not.
It's the terminology that's used in the uses table. We looked at that today. In the zoning ordinance, table 402.5A is the table that specifies the minimum land area per dwelling unit. And that is the term that's utilized in that table. So similar to trying to be consistent with multifamily development and multifamily dwelling, single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, we're trying as much as possible to be consistent with the use of terms, so that.
Well, that makes sense. Yeah, I didn't realize there was an inconsistency there.
Yep. And that's, it's been on the books for a little while, I think.
Do we know, are there any more occurrences of those terms?
Yes, in that same section, 40283, council packet, page 7. Yes, in that same section, four oh two eight three, council packet page seven, under A one, fourth line down, towards the end, it's repeated dwelling unit density. So replace that. And on the next page, council packet page eight, number two, the top third line down, the same term is utilized, so for each of those three, the proposal is to be consistent with the uses table. I'm sorry, not uses the table four oh two five four A.
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead, no, I'm sorry, we're here.
I'm sort of curious about why, what's the rationale for why multifamily development is not considered residential, for, to be a residential open space subdivision? Like, if you have multiple multifamily properties, as defined in this ordinance, on a single lot of land, why wouldn't you want to negotiate with a developer to set aside some land as open space, or to do the same sort of thing that we would in a residential open space subdivision, or suburb?
I think that the town would, but I don't think that the ord, the, the residential open space subdivision was, the foundation for that was single-family lots. It was, thank you, it was not set up in a manner to allow for multifamily development. In fact, that's actually one of the things I'm, I'm kicking around right now, is whether or not we need two different types of residential open space subdivisions, maybe, if, if we can, within the confines of LDO three, if we have the ability to retain a single-family residential open space subdivision, but also offer another option where you would have residential open space subdivision that would have different types of housing, including multifamily, maybe even multifamily development.
Yeah.
It's exactly, that's what I'd like to begin to kick around.
The, the Weeks Hill project was just that.
Yeah.
And, and I don't see why we would need a whole other ordinance for it, I would think that we could just expand the one that we have.
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, we're going to run into this at every single solitary turn, that our ordinances are not complete, or doing what we would prefer them to do. And I, I'm not quite sure how we'd get through that, I mean, but anyways, that's inside. Just another conversation.
Okay, so we kind of jumped ahead to the references to the minimum area per dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need to jump back? Because you said you had jumped in.
I don't.
We were on lots before that.
Yep, four, four oh two six two.
Also, I would just note that we don't, we shouldn't refer to the council packet pages anymore, or Doug shouldn't, because we're going to be looking at this copy thing, which we just handed out.
It'd be easy, if you want to see the underlined portions, it would be.
Okay. Yeah, my only concern with that is that people might not be able to follow along at home.
We have to.
We could reference the section as we went.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
If that's, that, that's what I was trying to do.
Right.
I was, I was trying to go back and forth between.
Why don't you say the section, and I'll try to find the packet page?
Well, they're only one off.
You're talking the same one.
Yeah, it's just one, oh, okay.
Because of the, the agenda.
Yeah. All right, yeah.
So if you say package page nine, we know that to look on page eight.
Yep. Okay, so we're on six, six two, back. So I'm on the, the new page five, four oh two seven six, residential open space subdivisions and multifamily development. Now this, so if you have a residential open space subdivision, and you're empowering the planning board to reduce lot sizes and change setbacks, because those are zoningisms, if you will, there needs to be enabling language in the zoning ordinance to delegate that to the planning board as an integral part of their subdivision review. So this is the requisite portion of the zoning ordinance that provides that legal hook, if you will, that empowers the planning board to make zoning changes, because otherwise zoning changes would need to go to the zoning board of appeals, it's the Kate Elizabeth case that established that.
It looks like the only major change there was changing the word single-family in the first paragraph under A to residential, is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, yep, exactly.
I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
So you're, you're telling me that changing those three words would prevent, if we didn't change those, that that would prevent the planning board from doing this work? Because what I'm hearing you say is that, that this is directly related to the zoning ordinance, and if the references aren't correct, then there's no link between them. I'm having a hard time believing that changing single-family to residential would, would either enable or prevent the, the planning board from working on that. Maybe I'm, that's what I'm, my question, I guess, am I misunderstanding?
Anticipating what I'm calling phase three.
Right.
Which is adjusting the requisite portions of the subdivision ordinance, which is probably going to include residential open space subdivisions and maybe different types. Rather than having to revisit four oh two when we make the subdivision change, that's why the proposal is here in four oh two seven six, to strike out single-family, so that we don't have to change the zoning when we propose phase three of the subdivision standards.
Right, I think you might have missed that part, Dan.
Okay.
Yeah, we were talking about having different phases of implementing this law. Right, we did ADUs, right now we're doing affordability and increased density, and as Doug's referencing, we're going to work on updating the subdivision standards for residential open space later. So, but I think that's a different, that's a different part of the, our ordinances, right? So right now, we're looking at the zoning, and we're going to have to go back to a different part. So we're just updating the reference here, so that it matches what we do in the future.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the upshot is the only change.
Seems, it seems, it seems inconsequential difference.
I mean, I think by not changing it, you're limiting yourself to only addressing single-family homes, which this does, this.
To our earlier point, if you want to be able to include multifamily too.
Yeah, it's not just, right. One of those small changes that has a big impact, I think.
Yeah, it was the.
The lawyers have spent way too much time looking at this, one or the other, I'm not convinced which one it is.
Well, no, it, it stems back to the Kate Elizabeth versus Sawyer case, where, where the planning board approved, approved a cluster subdivision, and they took, went to the law court. The law court says you have, if the planning board's going to change anything to do with zoning, you've got to have that legal hook in the zoning ordinance, and then dovetail it with subdivision.
Okay, I'm, I won't.
Layers of legalese, yeah.
So it's, that's why it's, that's why it's in there.
Okay, well, that makes sense, even though it's a small word.
So let's see, this is four oh two eight three.
So originally packet page seven, we're looking at six on our hard copies here.
So it's the second line, the.
Why doesn't the title have?
Go ahead, Doug.
The blue is our proposes, and our proposed changes, and then the red is what the attorney Language consistent with the terminology in the uses table, that we talked about.
A minimum area per dwelling, instead of dwelling unit density.
In three locations, in A, third line, one, the first and about the fifth, sixth line, and in.
A two.
As well.
Mm-hmm.
Just to keep the use of terms consistent.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, this is down there, down in B two of four oh two eight three, again, be, trying to be as consistent as possible with terms. Single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, multifamily dwelling, multifamily development. Those are the big, those are the big four.
So is the red highlighted in, on, are those additions, or is that struck out?
The, the pink?
The pink.
The pink is directing attention, is highlighting the.
Comment.
Comment from the attorney.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Is one of her questions, the difference between a single-family home and a single-family dwelling? Because it looks like we've added the terms, single-family dwelling, to line two A, is that, is there, what is the difference there?
We, we kept both.
Oh, okay.
What happened in the Village District, Village Center District Standards, is the way it ended up being drafted, just inadvertently, it said, single-family homes. And in doing this review, we realized the inconsistency of terms, and I think in the final version, we said, single-family homes and single-family dwellings. Single-family dwellings probably being more important, because that's the term that's utilized in the uses table. We're going to use both.
Are they kind of interchangeable, though? I mean.
I suppose.
Yeah, all right, there's no real difference between the two structures?
Yep, but.
Wouldn't it be better to just pick one and go with that?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, if, if single-family homes isn't used anywhere else.
Well, it might be used in the design standards, I, I didn't check that, but.
Well, I mean, yeah, is there any reason to have both terms, single-family home and single-family dwelling? If not, then it should just be one everywhere.
Yeah, and it sounds like it needs to be single-family dwelling if we pick.
Yeah.
That's the term that's in there.
I recently obtained copies of all of the ordinances as Word documents. One of the things that I'm struggling with is just the fact that currently all of our ordinances are separate documents. So if you do a search on this term, for instance, you've got to crack open every individual document that might be related, related to this one in order to find it. I think that that's something that we should talk about, because I think that there's a huge potential there for a lot of extra work, and just the kind of confusion that we're discussing here, because, you know, now, because the design standards are in a totally separate document, and you kind of have to remember to go look at that one, and that's the stuff that's always jumping up and biting us.
Right.
I think reformatting our current ordinances, so that it's just one document, could make some of these changes a lot easier.
Is there a reason we have them separated right now, Doug? Like, just.
It, it probably relates to the Village Center Design Standards, I, it's been a long time since I've looked at those, so.
Well, they've grown up over time, so, you know, it was easier to just create a new document and add it on. Something to think about going forward and.
All right, let's move on.
Next thing is four oh two ten fourteen, which is council packet page nine and page eight in the printout. We eliminated four under B to make it clear that all of those four bullet points need to be complied with.
Okay.
It's just a typo. Practically, practically achievable, Council Maguire's favorite.
Right.
I have an annoying question. In the third bullet, under driveways and parking?
Yes.
And, and it's, the parking has to be located in the rear of the property, and then the third bullet says it needs to be properly screened from the roadway, so I'm just sort of wondering, what does that mean? I mean, what, what would it look like to properly screen something that's already behind a building?
They're corner lots.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, there might be side, side views.
Roadway as applicable.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that addition would make sense.
This is hard, I've got a, I'm trying to keep one version that, guys are throwing me for a loop here, killing me.
I'd go with the one they were looking at myself, but that's just me.
Okay.
So I admit preparing for this, I was reading the other document, and I'm trying to think to myself, what part of this are we going to talk about?
I, I had the same struggles, but yeah, it's, you know, I'm glad we have this marked up version for us.
And this, in the middle of the, the new page, not, let's say, give a section, four oh two ten fourteen, D four, I believe the attorney's right, that the may should be shall, because the, the smallest type of development would be a single multifamily dw, multifamily dwelling, that would be three units, and that's subject to multi, that meets the threshold for multifamily development. So that's, so the may should be shall, the attorney's correct. Change that, down under F five.
Matthew, you had.
Well, this is from my, you know, regulatory drafting, you know, there's, there are plenty guidance documents out there, and I don't mean to disagree with an attorney, but generally the guidance is to use must rather than shall, because it's more, you know, more clear, but more sort of declarative, but I don't want to, I spend too much time discussing musts and shalls, so I'm sorry to bring that here.
A little PTSD on that.
Oops. But I just wanted to say that, and I'll shut up.
No, I mean, that's a good perspective, and expertise with that.
Well, the planning board would certainly like shall and must rather than.
Than may?
May.
Oh, yeah.
May is, if you wish.
May is, may is the thing that they, that they get in fights over.
This is right before F.
I don't think you can.
Must or shall.
Take it all out there.
Down, this reminder down there to, to the bottom of the new, if you will, page nine, town, obviously, town of Gray. Come on, let's see, water, we clarified and verified, I'm under four oh two ten fourteen, these are standards for multifamily development, under F five, water and wastewater, we verified the correct statutory reference.
Right, that's pulled directly from the statute, I believe, right?
Pretty much, pretty much, yep, yep. And tried to be more clear on four oh two ten fourteen, G shoreland, trying to be, G and H, G references shoreline zoning, H references subdivision, that again, is right out of the statute, the statute's very clear that you need to meet the standards in four oh three shoreline, and if you trigger subdivision, then subdivision review. I'm quite concerned, that's probably going to be the most common question, people that don't fully understand the new legislation are going to think if they have a lot in the shoreline, that's a lot of record, but you, you'd need one hundred and sixty thousand square feet for a second dwelling unit, so I fully anticipate that's going to be one of the most common questions, but we, even though it's in the statute, because of its importance, we felt it was important to be able to include it here, to be able to point to it.
Right.
Same thing with subdivision.
I mean, our mul, the way this is currently written, it's not totally exempting multifamily housing from the shoreline zone, it just needs to comply with the zoning requirement, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And similarly, in H, we're not exempt, this is reading to me that subdivision lots are still, are still need to follow this, the subdivision rules, is that, is that how this is?
This language, I believe, comes, it's directly from.
I know, I know it is, and I, I just have found it confusing, so I'm just, I'm just asking for your clarity's sake, if you, if you understand what H really is saying in plain terms. Or under the shoreline zone, the one about subdivision requirements. This section may not be construed to exempt a subdivider from the requirements for division of a tract or parcel of land in accordance with the requirements of this law regarding So does it exempt them from, it does not exempt them from being able to split that lot, right? That's how I'm, that's how I'm reading it.
If they have sufficient, if they meet the standard, yes.
Okay.
Same thing-
But that's why we need, that in particular is why we need to revisit our subdivision standards, especially for open space, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just this one little paragraph here.
That's the dovetail. Yep, I mean, if you have a vacant parcel, and you wanted to put a three-unit multifamily dwelling on there, that's three dwelling units, so that would trigger subdivision.
Okay.
Good, a quick question. Is there a upper limit for which a larger multifamily subdivision, we would need to do something, or want to do something in addition or different from this? So you, you've been talking multifi-, you know, the, the multifamily is three units or more, correct?
Right, we've made two definitions now for multifamily. There's the multifamily dwelling, which is what you're talking about, and now we've added multifamily development, which was one of the new definitions at the top of this.
Right, so my question is, will, will this document work successfully for all the different permutations of multi fam-, multi-unit, multifamily buildings?
That's coming up with-
Oh, sorry, okay.
I think it's-
Don't jump ahead.
Where are we? Trying to remember where we talk about.
Oh, wait, that was one of my questions.
Yeah, there's a whole section on two or more dwelling units on one lot, is that, is that where we would address that?
And that, and that's, that's a new section.
Right.
We're not there yet, but-
Okay.
That, that one was intended to kind of, kind of bring this all together.
Right. Okay, well, let's, let's wait to answer Dan's question-
Yep.
-so we get there, and we can skip ahead to, um, affordable housing development section, which is now section I on packet page twelve, um, new, new packet eleven, what's, what's in there?
Yes, yep, and as I indicated at the beginning, there are, we repeated, updated definitions of affordable housing there, that's what's in the red, as a result of the June twenty twenty-three amendments by the legislature. There's the, they will be verbatim as, with the changes to the definitions at the beginning of the zoning ordinance, four oh two, two, two. Uh, then number three down below there, just some clarifications with town and zoning, and, and, let's see, what is this section?
So I know the red, um, aligns with the definitions you highlighted at the beginning of the meeting, but all the blue is also kind of, is pulled basically from the statute? Or have we-
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, and then at the top of new page twelve, number five, under affordable housing developments, uh, the attorney added clarification issuance of an occupancy permit, just to be clear, that the requirement for the long-term affordability at a minimum would need to be, uh, brought to conclusion before the occupancy permit went out.
How would you assure that that happens?
Actually, then, that, that's gonna be, at least if all goes according to plan, I think that's gonna be part of phase three. Um, I would like to front-load the mechanics, logistics, and necessary technicalities of the long-term affordability before final planning board approval is given, to make sure that it gets done.
Would we, would we require the developer to provide us, um, stamped copies of the deeds to show that that's been done?
We could, uh, we haven't crossed that, that's relatively mechanical, um-
Yeah, I understand that, but who, whose job is it to make sure that we get those before we issue the permits?
And that, that, again, that's part of the phase three with the subdivision. The, the aspect that I'm actually more concerned about resolving is the, and we tried to clarify this, for the benefit of and enforceable by a third party, acceptable to the municipality, just as it's increasingly challenging for those parties that want to put their land in conservation, it's hard, it's getting increasingly difficult to find parties that are willing to be the holder of the easement, and I, if at all possible, it, it, and at least based on the input that the council provided in June, it doesn't seem as though, ideally, the municipality would be the entity that's policing the affordability for thirty years.
Yeah.
So I, my, my suspicion is that it's going to be challenging to find a third party that's willing to accept that.
I don't disagree, but that's not, that, I'm backing up at the beginning, you're issuing the occupancy permit, so you need to have proof that the deeds have been registered correctly, so that you, before you issue those. So in my mind, we put as much of this stuff on the developer as-
I agree.
-we can, and then it's simply a checkbox on the application for subdivision at the end that says, "have received the official copies of the deeds to prove that the affordability piece has been recorded."
Agreed.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ian.
Yeah, I just would note that there, you know, there are a variety of ways to preserve affordability, so for example, Avesta is a nonprofit, and it now owns, um, Meadowview, and is gonna construct a new, uh, property, we hope, at some point there, that it will also own, and, and it's, um, I mean, I, I, depending on how the second property is financed, it's a long-term housing tax credit, that has an affordability period of fifteen years, so it's, but typically, what happens is, at the end of that affordability period, um, the investors who benefited from the tax credit, you know, sell it back to the nonprofit, um, and it continues its, being affordable. But there are other strategies for preserving long-term affordability in housing, including , uh, community land trusts, which, uh, own, which are organized, nonprofits organized to own the land under properties, so that it just removes the land from the speculative market, uh, kind of like a conservation land trust, but, but specifically, it's, specific purpose is for, you know, affordable housing retention. And then there's also, like, limited equity co-ops, and, um, there are a variety of hybrids kind of emerging, so they're all pretty small at this point, but there's efforts, uh, that actually I'm working on to try to support these new entities, to, to try to expand their involvement in affordable housing statewide. So I, I mean, it doesn't have to be, there, there, there are alternatives to just having a restrictive covenant on a, an affordable housing unit, but, I mean, especially for, um, single-family properties, it's, it's a, it, you know, in a, in a regular subdivision, this could be difficult, I could see, yeah.
But even those new entities, you're gonna have the same problem, over the course of twenty, thirty years, they may fall apart-
Yeah.
-not exist, I mean, I don't think there's a, I don't think they're a slam dunk as to solving the problem, but they do provide another mechanism for, for assigning, I guess, the responsibility for the affordability piece.
Right.
Okay.
So that's, that's head on, so the, this is a, this is a, let's see, council packet page fourteen, page thirteen on the, the underlined, if you will, version, uh, this is a new section, um, that, it became clear when we were drafting these standards, we had the multifamily development standards in four oh two, ten fourteen, and we had the revamped accessory apartment, now ADU, in four oh two, seven six, seven nine, whatever it is. Um, and so it, this is an attempt to bring everything together, um, all in one, one place, to say, okay, if you are con-, if you, a property owner, are contemplating two or more dwelling units on one lot, here's your one place to go to look, and that will lead you to the, if you're headed towards multifamily development, it's intended to provide a, a link, if you will, uh, to, to get you there, so that, and they're all-
So this section is basically referring people to all the relevant sections based on what they're looking to build, is that what you're intending?
It, it is, with the important addition of, this is four oh two, seven twenty-two, um, number seven, these are right out of the statute with customized, if you will, grave references, and eight is, is probably a really good example, if you have a vacant, if you have a parcel that-
Doesn't have anything-
Doesn't have anything on there, there are, there are caps on there-
Mm-hmm.
-in, in the statute, that the, that the council said they wanted to place in there. So I anticipate that most property owners that are going to be contemplating a se-, a second dwelling unit on their, on their lot, if the, the goal here was to give them a copy of the accessory dwelling unit, four oh two, seven nine, um, and this section right here, and they would know what they needed to know for the purposes of moving forward, how many units they could have, what they needed to meet, et cetera.
It's a small request, I don't think it's gonna change anything, but on number three, in compliance with the state of Maine subsurface wastewater disposal rule, can we put between disposal and rule parentheses, SSWD, to explain the acronym?
Sure.
Oh, the fa-, the acronym that follows in that sentence?
Yeah, it, I mean, most, you probably figured it out, but-
No, I, I-
Your brain's melted if you've read this far, so you might not-
I would prefer that, I, I-
Sure. So this section contains the, the caps, um, and basically what happens is, the first ADU is exempt from additional lot area, but once you get beyond that, you need to meet the minimum lot area per dwelling unit. It's how the, the statute is written, and this section is intended to try to step property owners and code officers and administrative people through, saying, "okay, if you're doing this, if this, if you have a vacant parcel, this applies, if you have an existing single family, you can do this, go see seven nine for, um, accessory dwelling units."
Um, it may be covered in here, and I just forgot, but what if you have an existing duplex and want to add another duplex?
Good question.
I don't like the stat-, I don't remember that in the statute.
I don't think I do either, that's why I'm asking.
It's, I, it's the first time, I've heard that all the time.
I mean, I, I think-
It's a good question.
I mean, it technically would be what's now classified as a multifamily development, right?
Hmm, no.
Two duplexes? Cause that-
Oh, two duplexes.
Two duplexes, yeah.
Two duplexes would be a multifamily development, but I, I thought your question was if you had one existing-
If you already have one, right, so it's not a new development, it's not a vacant lot, you have one existing duplex, you want to build another duplex, is, is the duplex that exists treated as a single-family home?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Cause you already have two dwelling units.
Right.
Could you build a duplex on a lot with a duplex if you didn't have the area, I mean, a duplex isn't an ADU, right?
N-, no, it's not an ADU.
I wouldn't think you'd be allowed anyways unless you had the space to accommodate.
Well, but under these, like, density bonuses, you're allowed up to four dwelling units?
If it's a vacant parcel.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, there, it, it's taken a lot of, uh, mental tenacity to, to get through this.
Well, the requirement of the additional land for any more than the first ADU does provide a bit of a failsafe to the process, and would prevent them from popping up like mushrooms, because, you know, on many of the lots, you probably wouldn't, you, you know, you, you might not have that much space, especially in places where there are already non-conforming lots or smaller lots.
Yes.
Yep.
So, so in our current definition of non-conforming lots, how are they affected by the ADU rules?
Non-conforming lots, let's say you have a non-conform, a legitimate non-conforming lot of record upon which is a single-family dwelling, they are allowed to, provided they meet the water and wastewater requirements, they are exempt from the additional land area requirements, and could add either an attached or a detached ADU.
Okay, so they still could, even though it's a non-conforming lot?
Setbacks, lot coverage, water, and wastewater, the same setbacks, need to be clear, same setbacks as the, the single-family, the ADU, the law's very clear on that.
Yeah.
The, you cannot require additional or special setbacks for the ADU that do not apply to the existing single-family.
Right. But the sing-, but the existing ones still apply, so.
Yes, hey, yep, you get one, you get one ADU setbacks, lot coverage, but you do not need additional land, lot size.
You don't need more area, but you need to main, but you have to have the setbacks.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Setbacks, coverage. Okay.
Yep, I think we can-
Okay.
That was the last big-
That was the, yep.
Change, right, and there's the useless, uh, table, which you covered some of the changes already, the multifamily ones.
Forty-two, it's a packet page, is that, trying to help those, pack, count, council packet page seventeen, page sixteen, uh, mo-, the distinction between multifamily development and multifamily dwelling, uh, and then on the next page, single-family dwelling and two-family dwelling, again, the, trying to be consistent with use of the terminology.
Yep.
Okay, and council packet page, where it says maximum. Where is it? Here it is, uh, council packet page nineteen, the underlined version, if you will, page eighteen, towards the top, that the statute says that you can re-, only require a maximum of two spaces for every three dwelling units for affordable housing. So we have it in parentheses as a ma-, because the table is minimums, we put, we put it, we put a maximum in there, to be clear.
Yeah.
To make sure the planning board understood.
What's the reasoning behind that?
I believe the concern on behalf of the drafters of the legislation was that there might be municipalities that would impose more stringent parking requirements that couldn't be met, and they didn't want that to be an impediment to allowing affordable housing.
But we would only, but we would require, we would require two for two or more bedrooms, where they're talking about two for every three dwelling units. So is a dwelling unit a, a studio, a one, or a two-bedroom?
Either.
Any of those.
So you're only gonna be able to require two parking spaces for any three two-bedroom units, is nuts.
If it's affordable. The statute requires-
I understand that, but I'm still gonna express my opinion that it's nuts, because you're gonna have more parking than that. It, it might not in Portland, or Lewiston, Auburn-
Right.
But in Gray, Maine, you're gonna, foreseeable, foreseeable future, but anyways, I'm, I'll stop editorializing, cause it's not gonna change over there.
Didn't we have, um, a reference to ADUs and how they, they cannot require off-street parking, isn't that right? Is, would that, would that be in this table or a different table?
Hmm, that's a good pickup.
And it's, and I think it's just the first ADU.
Trying to remember if there's anything in the statute about parking in ADUs.
I think there was.
Yeah, at least that's what I remember, too.
I'm pretty sure it was that you couldn't require off-street parking.
Cause that's when we got into this whole thing about now, we have to have a traffic or parking ordinance, because when it snows, we can't require people to get off the street without it.
Okay, we'll check on that, that, good pickup, thank you.
Sure.
When you, when you're calculating the number of parking spaces required, do you round up or down, or, I mean, like, if you get halfway in between, is there a standard for-
There is, it's at, it's at the, either the beginning or the end of table three- There is, it's at, it's at the, either the beginning or the end of table three in article ten. Which I don't have in front of me.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just, I figured there was an answer to that, but.
Oh, I can't remember.
Yeah, okay.
Just like.
It's, it's not critical, I was, I was just curious whether there, there was. I figured there would be some. Somebody anticipated that.
And on other things, the, on other things, the planning board has some sway about parking and what's required. But in this particular instance, they no longer do.
Exactly right.
Correct.
I'll check on the ADU and the parking.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
It, it's possible that it ended up when we went forward with the change from accessory apartments to ADUs. Uh, but if it's in that performance standard, for that use, it should be echoed here.
I bel- I remember looking at it in a ta- in a table in one of the edited versions we had for ADUs, but it's just not in this. Okay, so then we have design standards that complement these changes.
Yes.
Updates there.
This is council packet page twenty-one. And. This. Is echoing. This is incorporating, if you will. LDO three into the village center design standards, making sure that we're. Being clear that all types of development, single-family, two-family, multifamily. Dwellings, ADUs and multifamily developments are. Subject to village center design standards.
Looked like multifamily dwellings is in that sentence twice.
Yep, we, we corrected that, yeah, in the final version. Yep, we picked that up. We were working on that this afternoon, actually after, cause the, if you look at the underlined version, the one that. Uh, Josh kindly copied. Kristen's language is in blue and then Natalie added the red and we, we picked up the duplicity and corrected it.
And I have a question, I, it, so the, is the sole purpose of the design standards, um. To promote the construction of such buildings to allow for adaptive reuse? I, I just thought that was an interesting statement. I mean, it's, when I think of design stem or standards. Adaptive reuse, I have to confess, is never at the top of my list. I, I mean, I, I think of like appearance, uh, you know, and things like that. So I just, I'm curious about that.
So that stems back to, there, there were some very basic, uh, design standards that were for the village. This is only for village center and village center proper zoning districts. There were some basic standards on the books about four years ago, three, four years ago, we had a, an intern that helped us revamp those. The emphasis and perhaps the, the terminology isn't ideal, but the intention was. As, as it reads really, it, um, if you had a vacant parcel in the village-centered zoning district. And you wanted to build a duplex, one of the objectives when it was being built. Was to minimize, as an example, load-bearing walls on the interior of the building. To allow it to be converted from residential use to commercial use in the future without costly, uh, structural renovations.
Yeah, yeah, and then Dan had mentioned that in a, in a meeting the other day, so.
I pushed it here too, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I saw your footprint on that one, or fingerprints, but, um, I wondered if, um. I, I mean, so if somebody wanted to build in the village center proper, uh, property that made. That met all the other guidelines and was made entirely of glass or something, you know, like, we don't care. Is that right? I mean, that's what I'm reading from this.
So the village centers, they, they, they contain structural standards, they contain, uh, screening and buffering. And landscaping, um, roof pitch, there, there's, there's a.
There are, are other standards.
Many, many other.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, and I, so I just, I thought it was an interesting, so the purpose of these design standards. This, this ones that are, that we're looking at right now, that's the sole purpose of it, but I mean, there are, I mean, it seems like they should reference other. Village design standards that have other, you know, effects.
And they do, um, and Kristen tried to emphasize excerpt, this is, this is a portion.
Yeah, this is just an excerpt of the lar- the longer.
Okay.
Design standards that Doug's referring to.
All right.
You might wanna look at the whole thing though, cause I think it is pretty minimal.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, I kind of, I think I was on the council.
Yeah, I think you are too.
It's pretty bare bone.
Yeah.
There's siding and all sorts, and there's accompanying photographs that were intended to be illustrative of the.
Okay, so those aren't, those aren't thrown out. With the proverbial bathwater, okay, cool.
I mean, I know, uh, we don't have a lot of flexibility on these edits, cause we're trying to align with the statute, but yeah, but do. Um, does anyone have any other thoughts beyond what we've discussed already for amendments they wanna see?
Oh, not worth sharing, yeah.
Not worth sharing.
I just had another question going back to page eighteen. Or I guess it would be council packet page nineteen with the minimum number of off-street parking spaces. And, and you, the way you, you know, for affording housing develop- affordable housing development. You've got this two for every three dwelling units maximum, and that's the maximum we can require. As I understand it, but that's not worded in such a way that the developer would be restricted from. You have providing more parking, is that correct?
The developer could choose to do that, but we tried to make clear to the planning board in its review of the. In this case, affordable housing project, affordable housing multifamily development. Was that the planning board could not require more than two for every three.
Right, but a developer wouldn't be restricted from providing more by the ordinance, by the way this is worded.
That's a good clarifying question. I, maybe we could just add the word, um, maximum requirement there, since we wanna give. Developer an indication that they could potentially provide more spaces if they.
Okay.
And they, for market reasons, they might, I mean, yeah.
Right. Sure.
Required maximum, however, do you think that would be best?
And that, yeah, that, that. From the maximum requirement, okay.
I'm sorry, I only, I only think of things to say after you've moved on to the next thing.
Yeah, did you have something else?
Um, yeah, it's lost now, I didn't write it.
Oh, okay. Um, Marty, are you good?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so Doug, it looks like we didn't have any real substantial changes that, so you, you'd still be on track for the first read at.
That's the hope.
Ten-three, yeah.
That's the hope, exactly.
Okay.
But there was enough substance here, again, predicated on the statute and the council input this past June.
Yeah.
Um, I appreciate the council being able to meet in a workshop setting it. It seemed, given the technical nature of this, to be able to. Be able to have a slightly more informal.
Yeah, if we had tried to do this at, in a meeting, it would have been much more abbreviated and.
And later.
Later. And later.
Well, and I just wanna say, I thank you for doing this. It is not easy, and I, just my, you know, minimal exposure to. Open space subdivision and trying to sort of thread that needle, I, I, it really makes my brain explode, so I appreciate your hanging in there with us.
It's actually made me a little teary-eyed, I miss being on.
Um, I just, I also wanna recognize, we, members of the water district here, did you wanna comment on anything in this? That you have concerns with or questions, um. Okay, all right. Mitch, yeah, if you wanted to come up, you just have to come up to the podium.
Don't sit down.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you very much for allowing us to partake in the listening process of your amendments. It always amazes me of how much detail elected officials have to go through just to get to the end results of. An intent of legislation. Representing the water district, we here have also had the opportunity to talk with your folks on staff and. They recognize that our only concern was really to protect the water sources. And that's really where we're, we're coming from. Where we have such a unique design and the location of those wells. We just didn't want to see development occur in a way that would add additional amount of effluent. And filtering needs of the normal organic material that's in the ground now. But it did raise a question after listening tonight to, to some of the things, and I'm wondering. We are, have taken no position pro or con, we service water wherever it's needed. Economically disadvantaged or otherwise makes no difference to us, we wanna make sure people have clean, healthy water. And a healthy water supply. When there is a density bonus for an ADU where there could be more than one or two into a tight area, but still allowable. Are you still requiring the same leach field specifications? Based on the number of occupancies that you plan for that particular lot? I didn't hear anything about that, and I don't know if you can speak to that issue, because again, um, if you were to. Increase the number of dwelling units allowing for. A, uh, additional people on that one, whatever size lot it is. It all goes vertical into the, into the ground for the purposes of filtering. If we had a wastewater treatment operation operated by the municipality or the district, it would be slightly different. This, but the capacity of sand and soils to absorb and filter out before it gets to the water table. Is a concern that I would have personally, and I don't know if that changes anything trying to meet the intent of the law.
What I, what I got from this was that they would still need to comply with the plumbing code. You know, that, that was actually talked about today, that in order to get approval for one of these, for one of these ADUs. They would have to demonstrate that they're still in compliance with the plumbing code for, for subsurface disposal, is that?
Yes, but I don't, I don't, to Mitch's point, I don't think it expanded the requirements for. What we, what we already have in the, in the. For requi- I don't know, I'm not as familiar with wastewater.
Well, I mean, plumbing code depends on bedrooms.
Does it? Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure. I mean, Doug, can you speak more specifically?
Yes.
I know it's on packet page, um, eleven or what's, or ten, it's our handout at the top, it talks about wastewater disposal.
Yep. It doesn't, if the council recalls when we changed from the accessory apartments to the. Accessory dwelling units, uh, there's a provision in there, there, so the, I've been a plumbing inspector for more than thirty years. Um, what happens in the plumbing code, or driving, not the building code, we're driving down the pu- external plumbing code at this point. There's different categories, there's expanded systems, excuse me, there's replacement systems and there's first-time systems. One of the provisions that I put in the ADU portion was that any ADU would need. That would, that required the installation of a disposal field would need to meet first-time system criteria. And I echoed that here as well.
Okay.
The plumbing code has an increasing propensity to, over, since the ninety-five revision. That Al Frick wrote, um, the plumbing code has an increasing propensity to reduce the threshold for replacement system variances. And in response to that, I recommended, and it's in this language and in ADU, that it, the, any disposal field. Needs to meet first-time system criteria.
Oh, I see it here.
That's what happened when you're an LPI.
I, I, yeah.
This is an interesting question, man.
Yep, come on up. Just state your name and.
Mike McDonald, and I'm a trustee of the, the water district.
Yeah.
Um, I've been in the drinking water business for fifty years. Um, and I just wanna make it clear that the wellhead districts were set up for protection. Under the, uh, Safe Drinking Water Act, which is a federal law monitored by the state. Um, as far as subsurface disposal areas. In the wellhead protection districts, wellhead one or wellhead two, those district, those protection zones. Were designed to protect at the present time, and that was, uh, what, ten years ago? That, that we revised that by state statute. So any additional, um, dwelling units, accessory dwelling units. Uh, would have to be limited to outside the wellhead district. Cause it, that, well, those, wellhead protection zones will not accept any more subsurface wastewater. That's what is designed flow towards the wellhead, um, cannot accept any more. So within those districts, we'd have to severely limit that. Cause that, that zone will not accept that. We're already being attacked from the other side of the turnpike. With these PFAS requirements, um, our concern is, um, basically. Nitrites, which comes from septic. So, we, we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah, that's a good reminder. I'm not, Doug could speak to this more, but I'm not sure the current statute limits. Uh, exempts wellhead zones from the ADU portion of this law, but perhaps it should, I don't know if we can inquire.
Well, if we're, if it's, it's strictly implying, uh, increased density, the, the wellhead zones will not accept that.
Right, so the way we, we're laying this out is that the wellhead zones are not in the districts where we're rolling this out in. But we recognize that the comprehensive plan land use map did include wellhands, wellhead zones in the density map. But we will address that going forward. We haven't finalized those zones yet and where the density will be long-term. Um, but Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, the statute doesn't allow for exemptions in wellhead districts for ADUs, yeah, currently.
Fight between the state and the federal government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't exclude that?
It does not exclude ADUs. It, it, those, the wellhead zones are not in the density, um, zones that we're implementing this in. But it does not exclude the ADUs portion of the law, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, that's counterintuitive to other state laws.
Yeah, I, yeah, you're right. A lot of this law is counterintuitive to other state laws, so.
Okay, well, you just need to consider that if you wanna continue, um, to have the great water that we have supplied to the customers.
Yeah, we certainly do, and I think we will take that into consideration as we look at the zoning map going.
I would encourage you to speak with our representatives in the state legislature, because.
Yeah.
It's a permitted use in wellhead one and two right now, and that's driven by the state law, so I think that would be a, a great conversation to have with them.
Actually, we don't have to do that, thank you.
All right, thanks for sitting through our meeting today. Doug, do you have everything you need?
Yes, to, just to, to be clear, so what happens in wellhead one and wellhead two. The minimum lot size per dwelling unit is four acres, okay? Um, so as currently proposed, the growth area is village center and village center proper. But if there were a lot in either wellhead one or wellhead two, you would be able to add. And it had a single family on it, you would be able to add one dwelling unit per lot. And the disposal field would need to meet first-time system criteria. But the only way that you could get more than one ADU on a lot that has an existing single family. Is if you had twelve acres. Because of the minimum lot size.
Open mathematics are a bar in and of itself.
They would have the practical effect of limiting. More than one ADU per lot for most lots.
If it was a developed lot, but if it was an undeveloped lot.
Then they could have up to two.
Then they could have up to.
In an, in, outside of the growth district, they can have up to two.
Right.
That's where the, hence the reason that I, narrow the funnel here, if you will.
Yeah.
VCVCP, until we can have these on-point discussions. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense to me, does it make sense to others? Yeah, okay.
There's a lot of balancing that needed to get done here.
Yeah, it, there's, yeah, a lot of back and forth on the different types in the different zones, so, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Don't tug on any threads.
Right, exactly. Okay, so we will revisit this at first read and public hearing on. Okay, so we will revisit this at first read and public hearing on October 3rd.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
So before we adjourn, I, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I just, we're scheduled to meet with Don Garrish to talk about the town manager search on, I think it was October, our October 10th workshop, I'm pretty sure we confirmed that. And that's where we're going to be, you know, hashing out what we'd like to see in terms of outreach and job description and who we're including in the process. I just wanted to get the conversation started. Or just really remind everyone to start thinking about what they would like to see. We can spend a few minutes talking about it right now, but, you know, we definitely would want to have the bulk of this conversation when Don is present, but, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, are we gonna allow public comment at that? And how will we structure that? Because we've talked about allowing public comment or chat.
Yeah, we haven't amended our, our agenda templates yet. But I'm, I would be open to having public comments with others.
Yeah, I would support that.
Yeah.
If someone has.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, one of the things I would like to see as part of the search is some sort of resident engagement. I, I don't think we need to form another committee because I think we're struggling to find volunteers for things as it is. But I think I would definitely like to have input from at least committee members on the search and the, and the type of manager we'd like to see. And perhaps have one or two sit in on interviews. I think that would be a good representation of the residents' input, and we're all residents also. But I don't know if others feel strongly about forming a separate committee or putting word out to just get whoever wants to join in over the process. So I, I don't know how would others like to approach that.
I don't want to form another committee. Is your thought that, that we would communicate to this request for their input to our assigned committees?
Yeah, I think that would be the idea, is we'd put our request for their input. And I don't know how best Don would want to get, receive that input. I don't, we'd have to check with him.
They could email us and we could bring that along.
So email the chairs of our committee species.
Can I?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we can talk about it with Don on the 10th. But my, my idea was, yeah, that we should at least seek input from existing committee members as a way to engage residents' input.
I mean, they have, in my mind, a, a unique position because they're involved in some aspect of helping us sort of run the community. And so they would understand, you know, from their committee's point of view, what they see as some of the issues are. And it also feels, in my mind, to some extent, I would want to, I guess, characterize it as a reward, but.
Validation.
Yeah, of their efforts.
Did, Ann and Dan, did, when we went through a hiring process, you know, three years, three-ish years ago, did, did you have resident input as part of that process or in any form?
Not in the way we're talking about doing it now.
Okay.
It was also in the middle of a pandemic.
Oh, right.
Where they're starting.
That's a good point, yeah.
So it was, it was a little harder.
It's not the same situation, yeah. Is there any other big, big ideas anyone has? I, I guess I just want to surface those now before we get in a room with Don. If anyone has like unusual proposal or, yeah, go ahead.
Not a proposal, but just there is some language that was used during the hiring of Deputy Commander that was excluded from Nate about a residency requirement within one year of taking the job. And I just wanted to kind of put that out there, not to say like yes or no, but just to say I think that it should be decided on because it was kind of left dangling. And you can see, you can, I could make points for and against, but I think that as we're going forward, I think that there should be clarification from the council on the point as to what we're looking for or the expectation of the new hire is.
Yeah, and I, I'm opposed to the residency requirement because it's hard enough to hire people as it is, and to impose a residency requirement is, I, I think, suicidal.
But it also had lived with it, as I saw, some stuff today was lived with it XX miles of Gray within one year of. So it's not like you need to get within one mile radius of town hall.
I agree with that part.
So again, it's just kind of putting it out there, what's, what was out there, what was lovely.
We made an exception with Nate because he had just bought a house.
Yeah.
So, but I don't disagree with the idea that it would be, I, I think that Nate lived too far away.
I think he did too, yeah, I think he clearly struggled.
Yeah, he said it wasn't going to be a problem, but it's different when, in February. It's snowing out.
Yeah, I think it was an issue for him frequently.
But to Ann's point, you know, if we require the person to live in town, that in many of the instances, the last time, actually in all but one of the instances, the last time we went to find a manager, that would have been a deal breaker.
Well, just as an example, Auburn, excuse me, New Gloucester recently hired a town manager, and I, he does not, he does not live in New Gloucester, but he lives fairly close. I've met him, talked to him about where he lives. So, you know, we hired someone who lived in a neighboring town or had an easier commute. I think that's more reasonable.
Yeah.
If you put a metric 17 miles on there to get pretty close to the metro room in Portland area, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to point out that the, the guy we were looking at, he was sort of the, I don't know, semifinalist, looked at that requirement of the residence, residency requirement, and looked at gray property values and said he couldn't afford to live here. So, I mean, I think it's another reason why we simply can't impose that standard. But, I mean, certainly, yes, it would be a, a real preference to have them not live an hour away.
Right, yeah, I think it should be expressed in a way that we can, you know, we can weight that appropriately in our, you know, in our evaluating of candidates.
If I recall from the charter, I believe it does have that requirement. I think unless, you know, the town council approves otherwise, there's some sort of an out there for the language. And I do remember in Nate's contract that it explicitly said he did not have to be a resident. So, I mean, you know, I, I, I do think we should at least attempt to have someone live closer, if they don't already, perhaps, I don't know if we're getting any out of state candidates, but if they're moving here, we might suggest they move to towns surrounding here.
Well, yeah, I don't think we can, I mean, if, if it's in the charter that they, that they, and I, I'm not familiar with the language, but it's expressed that they, you know, have to be a town, have to be a resident unless otherwise provided by the council.
I think that's how it's, I was just trying to look it up.
Yeah, it supports that effect, yeah.
Then, and then I think our process should reflect that, you know, that that's what we're looking for, is a resident, but, you know, we can.
Ideally, it would be a resident, but that's not what was the case.
I mean, to be honest, being a resident here sometimes creates conflict where you feel, you know, a duty to, you know, the citizenry, but, you know, you probably have a lot of personal relationships you have to manage on top of that.
Being able to get away from your work has.
Right, right, but I mean, we should change the charter if we're not, if we're not gonna, you know, if we're not gonna say that's what's required. But we can make special dispensations for, you know, you know, for the circumstances of candidates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, it sounds like, I'd have to go back and look at the charter language, but it, it sounds like that waffle language or that latitude is built into it. So, I mean, but we may be opening up the charter for another purpose, so if we do, we can take another look at that language.
That's, I was just thinking that also.
Yeah, I was thinking that also.
Oh, here, here I found it. It says in the charter, it says, "The town manager shall be required to reside in the town within one year after appointment unless this provision be waived by majority vote of the council." So, yeah. But, yeah, perhaps we don't, perhaps we want to touch that if we revisit it, perhaps we don't. We can have a conversation about that at another time. So is there any other, like, big things you want to make sure we cover with Don? And, you know, I just want to, I just wanted to give us the opportunity to touch base before we meet with him, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I just, I, one of the things we talked about with him when he was, came to one of our meetings was where we wanted to advertise. And I, I just want to make sure that we're prepared to respond to that because I, I do think, it seemed like we were in agreement that, you know, New England wide was probably as far as we wanted to go as opposed to a national search. But I just wanted to raise that one more time.
To me, it's, it's, it's a cost benefit, you know, like, what's, I'm fine with going national if it's not going to cost us, you know, an extra X, X number of dollars. Yeah, I mean, so I need to know what that number of dollars is before I would say whether we should go national or not. Is it going to be a thousand bucks to go national? I don't know.
Yeah, my, my gut was, why don't we start with New England? And if we don't get the type of applicants we need, or perhaps we don't get any at all, you never know in this environment. Perhaps we then go outside of the region if necessary.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
I, yeah, I mean, personally, I'd even narrow it a little bit more to the, you know, northern New England states and Massachusetts. I think that, I think what we need now, given the significant amount of things that we have going on, is we need someone who is interested in helping us execute the plans that we have rather than creating something new. I think in what we have to offer for the projects we have going, there's plenty of meat there for a town manager to, to build their reputation on. And I think that someone coming from very far away, I think is just too much of a wild card for me as far as their, how successful they'll be in acclimating and, and all the other pieces of that that I just don't think are predictable or controlable.
Even coming from, you know, the metropolitan parts of Boston is a lot different than living here, you know?
Yeah, that's why, I mean, Rhode Island, Connecticut, New York, or even that much more. That's why I'm kind of thinking, you know, there's, you know, Boston and Portland are well-known to each other. So anyone, I think, in the Boston area that was thinking that this would be an advantageous move for them, I wouldn't be as concerned about them not knowing what they were getting into.
But it's also true that people move out of state to, for work and then come back.
Yeah, I mean, that's, my husband, my husband boomeranged, I mean, it's not infrequent.
Somebody could be from, you know, a town manager in Montana that grew up in Maine, right? Wouldn't we want to find that person?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just, yes. That person would not be a concern to me.
Right.
It was the gentleman from Arizona who'd never been here before, who was all gung ho to town, that made me a little nervous.
Yeah, I, I mean, but, yeah, that, I have no problem excluding that individual or not putting a lot of resources into that, you know, reviewing that individual.
That individual, quite frankly, I think, you know, had a lot of things to offer. They had a lot of experiences and with the kinds of things that we were hoping to do. So from that standpoint, they were very attractive. But again, just the, you know.
Right.
To your point about, oh, sorry, were you?
No, I'm done.
Um, to your point about not wanting to have, or wanting whoever comes in to focus on the priorities we've already established. I would like to revisit whether or not we want to continue implementing all the professional development goals that Nate had begun and staff training and all of that. Because I think it was my understanding when Nate was hired that, the direction given to him was that one of the main goals was that we wanted to incorporate a lot of that professional development type work. And I think he took that on as one of the main things he was working on. So I just, I don't know if that's one of our goals still. So I just, I'm just, I'm just raising it because I, I think it is important, especially now that we have an HR department and the work has already begun. We've budgeted for it, so we just, we need to make sure that, you know, we need to have a conversation about whether or not that would still be a focus for someone coming in.
I think that it's a matter of personally, degree and the way it's implemented. I think it became, it, it went from being a priority in some respects to being the priority.
Right.
I would agree is not what we're looking for.
Right, I just don't want to lose a lot of the momentum we've had with the professional development, but I agree that it shouldn't be the priority because we just have a lot of balls in the air. But perhaps the staff would feel differently, and I think it would be important to hear from them.
Yeah, they'll definitely have a bite at the apple, for sure.
Is there anything else anyone wants to raise for the 10th? I'm not going to be too specific with Don. I'd like to hear what his recommendations are for how we should proceed and what others feel, we should give him an outline of some sort.
I guess in response, I, I would, I guess my feeling is I would not want to de-emphasize that professional development of staff.
Yeah, I don't want it to go away, I, I, right.
You know, or, or make it less of a priority than it is right now, I guess. I, I wouldn't favor that. I think we've had, you know, I, I think, yeah. I think it's something that needs to be stressed and, and something we need, you know, to make progress.
Well, I think part of the issue is that we as a council aren't involved in the day-to-day happenings of, of staff and how they structure their day and their training. But if we're giving direction to whoever we, to whomever we hire about whether or not that's still a priority, you know, we should reflect on that.
I think, well, I'm going to speak for myself. The, what we're, what the previous council, I think, was looking to do was to, all of us together, the council, the manager, the staff, to make sure that we're pulling from the same side of the wagon in, in all of the work that we do. Because our, our previous way of doing town government was a bit futile in the way it was set up, and each department sort of did their own thing. And that worked great when we were a smaller community. It, it's more important now than ever because of the volume of work that we all sort of adhere to a certain standard as to how we're going to work and how we're going to interact. And I think there's differing opinions among the staff, understandably so, as to how important that is or what that should look like. And the goal, I think, was, when we hired Nate, was to help him start to move us in that direction so that it became a more homogenized effort. I think there's still work to do there. I think when you look at even our documentation, you get from different departments, they look differently. You know, we need to be the town of Gray as a council and as a staff. And I think that's not got at just through professional development. It requires a different kind of leadership. Yes, people need skills in order to do that. But it also requires a leader who's gonna not only model that, but have the skills to coach people to understand the value of doing that and then help them, over time, change their behaviors such that we all improve.
And, and to put, yes, systems in place so that, you know, the vagaries of individual staff members aren't going to affect, aren't going to, you know.
Well, it's not just skills like Word and Excel.
But it's that too.
Oh, it is that too. I mean, it, it, but it's just not that, you're not going to get that kind of cohesive, team cohesiveness just by learning Excel or Word or some other program. There's, there's another skill set there.
I, I think, I think we're all in agreement, it's still something we'd like to see from someone we're hiring. Because I, Nate did begin the process, but it, it wasn't complete. So I, you know, I think we should emphasize that.
Never is.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Any other thoughts before we adjourn? Okay, next meeting is, I believe, the 3rd. And we will have a workshop space at 6 o'clock for that, and have the agenda out tomorrow.
That one I might be remote at.
It might be remote, okay.
Depends on if I get home in time.
Yep, that's fine. All right, we will see everyone on the 3rd. Good night, thank you.